You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the June fourth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the June Fourth Michigan City City Council Meeting to order. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just, just a reminder, if everybody in the audience would silence their cell phones or electronic devices, that'd be appreciated. Moving on, Ms. Nyland, what's the roll call?
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Mr. Falter.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
Ms. Lee.
Present.
Ms. Moldenar.
Present.
Mr. Nelson.
Present.
Mr. Preszbalinski.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one after them.
Thank you, Ms. Nyland, and everyone had the opportunity to review the meeting minutes from May twenty first. Is there deletions, corrections, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Beatry and seconded by Councilman Cora. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Reports of standing committees. Are there any reports of any standing committees? No reports. Claims docket this evening. Councilwoman Tillman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Michigan City Riverboat Boyd Claims Docket for June fourth, twenty twenty four. The City of Michigan City Finance Committee meeting did not meet on today, so we will go over the riverboats for fund number two, two, three, five in the amount of one hundred, two thousand, three hundred, eight dollars. E F T, Riverboat E F T, number two, two, three, five, zero dollars. Boyd Development E F T, Fund Number two, five, zero, four. The amount is for it is an encumbrance from twenty twenty three from the Riverboat, and that was for the base bid invoice for the completion of the twenty twenty four Michigan City Sidewalk Replacement Project. And again, the request for approved claims of one hundred, two thousand, three hundred, eight dollars and zero cents. The, the twenty twenty four Riverboat Fund Statement of Cash Position, fiscal year to date, June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, unexpended balance, seven million, nine hundred, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred, fifty-two dollars, forty-nine cents. That is all.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Is there a motion to pay the claims?
Some.
Support. There's been a motion by Dr. Cora and seconded by Councilman Dabney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Claims are paid. Moving on to reports from boards and commissions. And i- if I may, before we go to reports from boards and commission, we have a special guest with us tonight, Rick Carlson from the Michigan City Municipal Band. He wants to have a few minutes, and I allowed him to be moved up into the program because he has a seven o'clock practice, correct? So, Rick, the microphone is yours and.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. I'm Rick Carlson. I'm the announcer for the Michigan City Municipal Band and a member of the band's trumpet section. Our, the band's principal conductor is Dr. Jeff Dobler, and his assistant conductor is Quincy Ford. I'd like to thank the city council this evening for giving me the opportunity to speak now because, as Mr. Preszbalinski said, I do have to get to rehearsal, a first rehearsal for the season. This is Michigan City Municipal Band's one hundred and fifty-sixth season, which consists of ten one-hour concerts held Thursday nights at seven thirty at the Guy Foreman Bicentennial Amphitheater in Washington Park. Admission to the park with a current park pass is free. If you don't have a park pass, the park department has generously created a four-dollar admission, and which has been in place for the last several years. A four-dollar admission to the park at seven P M. on Thursday nights only, just for these concerts. Special thanks is due to Michigan City Parks Department for their careful maintenance of the facilities and providing this, this reduced entry fee. Our band remains very grateful to the city of Michigan City and their ongoing and outstanding support of Michigan City Municipal Band. When I do the announcements during these concerts, I frequently remind our audience that this band, and it's the opportunity to play in a band like this funded by the city, is the exception and not the rule, and that Michigan City has set a really high standard for community bands, which I think is recognized statewide. A special note, July fourth, it falls on a Thursday this, this summer, so our concert for that week will be at the gazebo, July sixth, the usual seven thirty time. Our band endeavors to program music that typifies a broad cross-section of American life. We feature music by composers of color, men and women, as well as traditional band literature, popular music of all kinds. We're happy to play requests. If you can get them in a week in advance or so, we'll try to honor them. Our opening concert, June sixth, features a piece we are premiering, written by Native American composer Brent Michael Davids, titled Reservation Band. It honors indigenous people and is reminiscent of bands the composer remembers playing in while growing up on a reservation. On August first, our August first concert features a premiere of two works written for our band. One is titled Remembering Naomi, a musical depiction written by Michigan City composer Dan Shav of the life of nineteenth-century women's suffragette Naomi Anderson, born to free black parents in Michigan City in eighteen forty-three. Her writing and speaking was prominent in the women's rights movement towards the end of the eighteen hundreds. She passed in eighteen ninety-nine. Also, August first, we feature from the president's own Washington, D. C. Marine Band euphonium soloist Hyrum Diaz. Hyrum is absolutely a world-class musician. He has soloed with our band several times over the past few years. And something else new for this year, our concerts will feature food trucks at the amphitheater. We'll see who wins on that, either the band or the food trucks. Hopefully both. I'd encourage everyone to come to spend an hour with Michigan City Municipal Band Thursday nights at seven thirty at the Guy Foreman Amphitheater. We welcome council members to come and be recognized and show their support for the band. With a great variety of appealing music, a beautiful venue in beautiful Washington Park, an opportunity to enjoy lovely summer evenings with family members on a blanket with a picnic, picnic basket or something tasty from one of the food trucks. What says summer enjoyment better than ten Thursday evening concerts with the Michigan City Municipal Band? We hope to see everyone there, and thanks so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. Appreciate it. Any questions?
No, I do have a comment, Rick. And we go to practice at night.
I do have a comment, and when you go to practice tonight, just saying, call the board and band members for the fantastic job they did at the cemetery on Memorial Day. They played for the ceremony. They did a fantastic job. And as usual, and I don't know how many years you've been doing it now, but you do the taps every year, and they sounded better than ever. So, thank you for your service, and all the band members, thank them for their service and because you do all this for free.
Correct? I, I would play for free.
Yeah, but, but anyway, I'm just saying, it's a, you guys do a fantastic job. Keep up the good work. And I hope the public gets out and supports the municipal band this summer. So, thank you very much.
Right. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, there's no reports of special select committees. Mr. Carlson has spoke. Reports from the mayor or other city officers and departments? Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped way ahead. I jumped too ahead. All right, let's go back. Reports from boards and commissions. And this evening, we have Clarence Holtz, Executive Director of the Michigan City Economic Development Corporation, giving the twenty twenty-three annual report.
Good evening, council. A little offended you guys don't want to hear me tonight, so. Great to be here. Once a year, we provide the council and the committee an update on things we do. Clarence Holtz, E D C M C Director, Tuukka and Spark Plaza. Before I start, I want to introduce my staff. I think they're all here. Listen, Liliana Franco in the back, Erin Meiser in the middle, and of course Caroline over here, and where is this? Oh, I'm not, not what it was. So, there we go. So, I got everybody's name tonight. But great, they've been a great team, and I really stepped forward the last few months while I was out, and so I'm happy that they're working together and making things happen for the city, and they're really motivated, and they want to see the city, you know, think great things happen to the city. And tonight, I want to kind of quickly go over some slides, and there'll be a lot of questions, I'm sure, because this is the first time I'm meeting with this council. So, feel free to ask me any questions here or somewhere else, but in your package should be our annual report that we put out every year. A lot of data in that, in that booklet on the right side of your packet. Feel free to browse through, but again, I'm willing to talk to you about any of the things we've done in the past year. We've had a great year. Beijing City is definitely on the rise, getting lots of attention both locally, regionally, and nationally, and a lot of projects are coming to fruition, and lots of new projects are underway. And not only industrial offices, but lots, lots of community initiatives that are taking shape, and we can all go through it in a minute, so. Just want to do a couple highlights for this past, past year. We had the Power Breakfast, something that started about three years ago, and we have soloed three years in a row. People want to come and hear what's happening in the inner city, and so this breakfast is all about construction and development. And so we use the, the funds from this breakfast to fund our schools. We use it to go to trade shows in Chicago. Last year, we sent a hundred and twenty kids to the Fab Tech, which is the metal fabrication show in Chicago, for sixty of those kids have never, never went to Chicago, and that's juniors and seniors. And so we try and make sure everybody who is interested in industrial-type jobs, technology-type jobs, corporate-type jobs, have a chance to see real-world applications in Chicago. And so these are national, international trade shows that we send them to. So, it's been a great partnership with the school system that allows us to do that with, with the kids. And so, and we've also, there's some other things with other middle schoolers, which we've, we've got the money, so if we get asked, we, 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 we had them use it, so. Our investment awards banquet, which many of you, many of you attended, every two years, we, we celebrate companies that are here. We want to let them know they're special. We want them here and want to keep them here. So, this year, we give fifty-five companies awards, both those who have been here for years, but also those who created investments over the past two years. So, we do it every year, every two years, and this year, I made, I made a few dollars, but we keep our prices low. We try and cover our costs, and then our sponsors cover, cover a lot of the other stuff, so. But again, great stuff. Competing projects, I'll run through it very quickly because many of you have been to, to put the ribbon cutting. Of course, Burn and Brewing took us five years to get to the end line, but we're here, and if you have not been there yet, go, go hang out there. Upstate Arts District, probably about a million dollars worth of project that passed a year and a half in terms of just, you know, people coming in, I want to be in our downtown, and I will say right now, we, we still getting calls. We get offices coming downtown. We'll be announcing soon a large medical provider to be in downtown, over a hundred medical jobs, which will really help our business in downtown. We get calls the last couple weeks for a new, couple new restaurants. Well, there's two coming this year. French restaurant and Italian cavern, Rocco, coming this, this August. And then, of course, we've had a few other ones we're looking for, like Thia Restaurant and, and other types of restaurant for downtown, so we get a lot of calls for those type, type of business. Go back one. On the Boulevard, we're seeing some investment out that way. We, we're trying to make us an area of focus to see more investments on the boulevard. So, last year, we had two, and of course, the, the one, the Mid City is on Highway twelve. If you have driven past it, there's a brand-new building on Highway twelve for that project. Health Link, again, many of you attend this ribbon cutting. This was a very quick project started last year, and they were finished within a year. Great project for our community. A lot of people don't know, over eighteen thousand people in La Porte, Canada, don't have health here. And so they provide access for people who don't have health here, and so also for people in Michigan City. New company that relocated or expanded in Michigan City from Michigan Trucking Company. They do wear a large shipment, and they break it down here and ship it to Chicago in smaller trucks. And so they just started and trying to get their feet out the ground, but they took an old building that was offline and spent over six billion dollars to get it cleaned up, and the building was stripped. For those of you that don't know, people have been stripping buildings, and instead of the, take a lot of copper and all the wires and everything, so they came and had to redo everything in the building, so. More on Franklin Street, the new Buffalo Wild Wings, you know, I guess we're a chicken city, but I love chicken in Michigan City. A lot of new chicken providers in Michigan City. Projects in progress. We'll go through it very quickly. Some of you, there is the Beachwalk subdivision, fourteen new homes, and these are really high-end homes. What's different about this, this, this development is that it's a, it's a modular construction, and you wouldn't know it. The house went up in one day. And if you've driven out there like Wednesday, you see the house going up, and Thursday, it's already up. And so we, we, we were, it was fascinating to watch it go up, you know, kind of box by box. They're looking to build fourteen out, out that way, and they're seeing, you know, people are buying them. First one, they sold. As they, 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 their listing price, they got over listing price, which was nine hundred, six, six, nine thousand dollars, almost a million dollars, so. Be great for a community in the future for, for those homes. Floridaian Collins is, we're actively working on this project, and again, amazing project for downtown Michigan City. They've got an eight-foot crane, and if you've driven past there lately, they've got the elevator shaft going up. The crane will double in a few months. It'll be two hundred-foot crane, so they need to have the crane higher as they go up, so. But amazing project for our city and, you know, two hundred and twenty units retail. And so expect to see people start moving in by the end of the year. Our agreement with them is once they finish three floors, we can start moving people in every, every third floor. So, by next year, when they almost finish, I'd say half the building will be filled with people, so the goal is to get people in quickly as possible. And there's some of the pictures. Solar, still working on this one. We had a meeting with them this past, last week about analyzing the M O U and getting towards the final agreement, and they're from our discussion with them, they have done all their condo docs by state law. You got to file it with the state before you can sell. And so they want to start selling condos the next, next month, so that will be a kickoff for them to get some, some buildings, some of the units sold. This is the development on Highway twenty. The previous council voted to fund water and sewer lines for this area. And this is a very important area for us because we don't have a lot of large land parcels in Michigan City, and I'll, I'll show you in your packet. We've had ten, you call it prospects or leads, but called us, we don't have the land to accommodate them. And so one of the things, which I'll show you, is we are within twenty miles of two large projects, over thirteen billion dollars. The Amazon Plant and the Samsung Electronic Battery Plant. And so all the suppliers are trying to be within half an hour from those plants, and so we're in the perfect spot. So, we need to figure out how to get this, you know, done this year because we get some more jobs coming, we safely do that, and, and taxes. Airport expansion, moving, moving forward, if you look in, in, they have every year, they're doing different things. I think in the next five years, the goal is to get that built, so exciting time for getting some small, bigger jets to downtown, to Michigan City. Woodland Ridge, if you've driven out there lately, they're doing the grading dirt and trying to get roads in and that kind of stuff, but again, big project from Michigan City, their first subdivision, a hundred-plus in fifty years. And so we are now talking to four auto developers, not single-family, in other places, they're not downtown. And so they, these guys are setting the trend, and so we're getting noticed with other investors who want to actually build single-family here in Michigan City, affordable single-family, not the million-dollar homes. Mall, we are talking to an investor right now about what they want to do with that mall. We, we can't tell you what that is yet because he doesn't know. He's looking for other investors and partners at this point. But the good thing is the Sears have sold, the majority of the mall have sold, and so we're talking to them. They're talking to Cable and other folks to kind of do a joint development, so that's kind of all private sector trying to get together and do a deal, so they're doing that right now, and so we're hoping that they will have a plan for us to look at, and then we can announce to the public at some point what's going to be there. But a lot of speculation right now, so, but we don't have a firm answer to give you of what's going to happen there. We know it's going to be retail and housing, so. If you look in your, in your packet, in the middle of the, in the middle of your, your, the annual report, we gave you a snapshot of all the projects or all the things that happened the past year. The big thing is, is the number of investments, but also people we had contact with, so again, we, we try and keep a contact, a contact, and also report all the stuff we do, just so, you know, we try and be good source of a few dollars. And so we try, we try and visit over fifty businesses every year in the communities to see how they're doing, how can we help? And so that's part of allowing Caroline and Erin to help work with small business, but also go contact a lot of large manufacturers, make sure that we're in touch with them and what's happening with them, so. This is very impressive, not only for me, but we're a small city of thirty-two thousand people, and when I showed us the people in Indianapolis, they're like, you're doing better than Carmel and Dullesville, because that twenty twenty-two, we estimated three hundred and twenty million dollar impact, that includes solar. Twenty twenty-three, a hundred and forty-eight million dollar investment, but the bigger part is of course the train station, a hundred and one million dollars. So, for a small city, those are some huge numbers, and, you know, because typically, when I first got here, we, we were doing between fifteen and thirty every year. So, having two years in a row, you know, over a hundred million dollars is very, very impressive for a city this size, and the projects keep coming because we will probably be announcing some more apartments the next eighteen months because we've had people looking at land across the city wanting to build. And that's again, not only downtown, but across the whole city. Looking to the future, we got a couple of things kind of want to run past you. Vibrant Michigan City, I know a lot of you have heard about this because this kind of started in twenty twenty-two. We were very fortunate to be chosen by Brookings Institute, Lisk and the State to do a pilot program. And they're looking for guinea pigs, and we said, you know, pick me, pick me, pick me, so we're very. Brookings Institute is a national think tank. They do policy research for the White House, you know, Congress, and so we, we like, of course, we want to see Brookings here, and then, of course, Lisk is a local, and this is, and it's a national nonprofit that does technical assistance, housing loans, and so they partnered together to work with three cities in Indiana. We spent about a year with the neighborhood, and they asked us to choose a neighborhood. We chose three. We're over ambitious, but we thought that the areas that were under-invested in the city should get a second look, so that was the west side, midtown, and, and, and east side. And so we spent a year with folks from our community to talk about what they want to see happen in their community. Because our biggest concern moving forward is we're not trying to make people get shoved out, we want to make sure people who live here can have a place to stay where they are. And so part of this initiative was to make sure we can look at the full of housing, look at food insecurity, like we're just having supermarkets in those areas, access to jobs, public safety, and of course, development in your community. And that means, you know, could be trees, could be sidewalks, could be, but, and so part of the, the whole initiative to make it organic, so we'll work with different organizations and help them to get where they want to be. One of the questions, we had a meeting last week, and people want to know, well, who is in charge? Well, the E C is coordinating because we can get the grants on your behalf, but we're not going to tell you what to do. We want you to go back to your community and work with community members, and we will help you get those things done, but we're not going to tell you what to do. Now, this is, because every, every group has a different mission, whether you're Salvation Army or your, or your kitchen mores, people doing it with the kids, or you're doing, but everybody has a different mission. The, the, the center is doing one of the art community, so we want to help each of those groups to enhance the, the community, and so our goal is to help coordinate and find a way to, to, to do that. We were also very lucky in some ways. We were, we got some funding from the city and the state to hire Erin, the, I'll come on board, I was her community manager. On the right is a young man from Kansas City. Part of a national initiative where the federal government and the National Nonprofit for Development got together, and they wanted to have sixty-five people calling fellows and put them in, in the, across the United States. So, we threw a hat in the ring, one of five hundred cities across the United States, made it to the top one hundred. We had an interview. We had some community members with us interview by, by, by Zoom, and a month later, we're told you, you got a fellow. So, EZ Redwood, is he here tonight? Didn't make it tonight. He's not here tonight, but he'll be working with us the next two and a half years at no cost. All we got to do is provide office space, so he'll be knocking on some of your doors to talk about what he wants to see happen in, on, on the, the Vibrant Business Initiative on the east side, west side, and midtown. But very well-informed young man has started a number of businesses for, for himself. Welcome. We're just talking about you. Go ahead. So, but so he's here, and I mean, we should call him up, so, but he is a common worker experience and ownership, and again, have being on his own, his own business owners in Kansas City, so we're excited to have him here. And he'll be here two and a half, two and a half years to work with us, and he, they're part of a national network, so they, they're meeting together, getting training, and we're hoping that he will be able to point us to resources from across the country, nonprofits, grants, but also pick up a lot of the initiatives that different groups are doing within the environment area, help us move us forward, so. I'm sure he can talk to you at some point about some of the things he's seeing in the, in the city and how he can help us get there. So, exciting for us. The six things we want to cover in Vibrant, and that, that is kind of hard to read, and it's in your packet because I made sure it was printed for you. But also, we want to make sure there's employment. We want to look at threatening the, the business district in those areas. We want to build healthy neighborhoods, full of housing, make sure there's recreation in those, in those communities, and also work with to transform the legacy sites, which is the Nippsco site and the prison at some point, what's going to happen to those, so, and those are border, the, the west side, so those are, those are huge changes on the west side coming. And this is a map that shows a visual of the west side, midtown, and east side, so some of you have, have been involved in the past, some of you were at the meeting last week, but large areas, and if you look at the west side, look, look how much land the prison gobbles up, and, but having, you know, those areas cleaned up and having new housing and, you know, streets and all, that will definitely change those areas. Legacy projects, the prison, we were very fortunate a year ago to get some grants from the state. Ready One project to look at reimagining the prison site, and so we had an R F E go about three months ago. We had eight firms that put together a team of people to compete for, to help us do this. We're now negotiating with one firm. They cover three states, Chicago, Indiana, and Michigan, and we're hoping to announce that soon. At some point, the mayor and I will be talking how we move forward and getting that done, but it will, it will, it will involve the community, community meetings and all that. That's part of the, the request is to make sure the community has a say in what happens there. So, there'll be more to come on that one. And Nippsco site, again, unknown right now. There's been a lot of talk on what, what can happen there, but it is a private ownership, so we've got to negotiate with them on some, see how we can maybe facilitate that to transition to some kind of, you know, tax-paying entity. It's one of the largest taxpayers in the whole county, so it'd be nice to get some tax money back into this conference because, you know, that pays a lot of taxes, but also the prison is one of a water, a large water supplier, and so we got to figure out when we lose these large employers, how can we get some of those dollar revenues back into the city, so. Just wanted to show you what the, the Electronic Battery Plant may look like. Again, roughly two thousand jobs during construction and sixteen hundred full-time jobs, are basically twenty-four bucks an hour, twenty miles away. The Amazon Data Center, eleven billion dollars, four hundred full-time jobs, six hundred remote, remote jobs, again, four, four buildings, largest investment in the city of Indiana, twenty miles from downtown Michigan City, so we see a lot of people living in Michigan City. There's, we are fifteen minutes by train to, to, to the car stop, so. Currently, we have an R F B out for Fifth and Pine. We release that in May. That site's been, is now eight acres that the city has assembled over the past seven, eight years. We see mixed use on that site. One of the things we're asking for is a supermarket downtown. We're, downtown is considered a food desert, well, north side is considered a food desert, and so. And so we asked the developers to come with a, with a supermarket in hand. Um, so that makes it a little more challenging for some of the developers. So we are looking at also apartments and Pasola Hotel, but supermarket is probably key. And we're not talking suburbia, we're talking small between thirty to forty thousand square feet uh, footprints. Uh, and so um, they, they're supposed to have us their um, their, their, their plans and uh, proposal with funding uh, identified by the end of June. And of course, then we got to go through the process for two months to pick the top three and then start negotiating with the top three. So we won't have a selection probably by December. Uh, it takes that long to get there. And of course, once you pick somebody, it's another year for them to actually get the money to, to build. So you're probably two, two or three years out. Uh, to where the, where we even start. But that's, that's how you do development. It takes a while for you to get started. But exciting. It's a whole block and uh, it will change our whole part of the city. We are the N R O for a five-year physics plan, and so we have engaged a group out of Miami to help us. Uh, they helped us before, uh, do a five-year plan the next five years. And again, that's in your packet because I don't, I'm not going to go through everything tonight. But um, it has a lot of good information about where we are as a city and how we can move forward. Um, talks about, you know, our traditional time. Um. Uh, we're, you know, tourist base, cities changing, uh, diversity. Uh, we have a very strong industrial base. How do we move forward with some of the laws? We get them, Nipco is gone, going, the prison's going. So how do we start thinking differently about how we plan for the city in the future? So um, you just council will deal with a lot of changes, probably more than the last ten, ten, ten councils because every fifty years that has changed and you guys are in the driver's seat for the biggest change in the city. Um, this, this by nature, what happens every fifty years. And so uh, there'll be a lot of changes, some of them unheard of, some I'm all new just because, you know, even in our office, we, we, we see new stuff come up that we never, never thought of. I mean, A I is the big thing right now and now trying to figure out how to use that for our documents and emails and doing our websites and responding to people. It's just a whole new world. And so uh, things are changing. Um, what do we want to see it to look like in twenty thirty? Some of the things we're talking about is more diversified industry. I know for those of you who don't know, we are number one in the um, equipment industry in the Midwest. Um, we have over a dozen companies with over two thousand jobs tied to that and probably another five thousand jobs indirectly. So uh, how do we use that to go to other industries? So robotics is one of the areas that we've, we've, we've targeted, electronics, technology of going to hope for healthcare, which is already here growing and growing. Uh, but you know, we want to keep our small town feel. Uh, we want to have the big city embedded with housing from, with all, with all options, lifestyle, income levels. We want to have year-round entertainment, uh, even in winter. Uh, which is, is happening as we speak, um, last two years. Uh, we want to have a safe, clean community. And so that takes work and time. And so uh, we want to be inclusive. We want to have uh, jobs, apprenticeship, uh, entrepreneurship system, uh, sorry, part of a national and regional eco- ecosystem. We want to be able to be a welcoming place. And of course, with a US national park in the country, we want people to come and enjoy our national park. And as somebody said, we want to be the, the Martha's, the, the, Martha's, the, the Midwest. So people want to come here and hang out here and stay here. And uh, so we think there's a lot of opportunities here in Michigan City uh, for building quality of life for residents and, and visitors. So we want to keep building on those things. Uh, the pillars, uh, storytelling, uh, placemaking, workforce development, economic modernization and economic inclusion. So all the areas we want to, we, we, we're working on the last five years. And so everything we do is on, is on those five pillars. And the goal is to bring uh, more employment with, in line with national numbers. Our employment numbers are real low in terms of um, job pay scales. So how do we make sure we are at least getting to the state, state averages? And then eventually the national averages. So we're looking at um, in the future, how we make sure we do it, um, when we have uh, incentives and new projects. How do we make sure that we have a better wages for it by, by industry? And that's, we're doing some research right on that right now. And then of course, building quality jobs. Um, how do we increase business startup? Um, for those of you who don't know and um, have looked at Business City history, all our big companies started here. Solair, Southern Polytech, uh, Horizon. What happened along the way? They got big and it got bought out. Even Decker is now owned by a Swedish company. Now it's now the, uh, called Atlas Copco. So but those are all people who were entrepreneurs fifty years ago, thirty years ago, who started a company here. They grew it, it got big, it got bought out by Mon- Mon- Monet National. So we have a, we have a D N A for that in Michigan City. So how do we keep that going and start? Have a new company started, whether it's industrial, technology, healthcare, but but let's foster that D N A to get more and more companies that are home world in Michigan City. And uh, again, housing, we, we keep preaching housing because we want to make sure everybody has a place to stay and they can afford. Um. And then some of our challenges for the future is, you know, I tell people we got high wage jobs within twenty miles. So it is going to create competition for local employers, uh, because uh, there those jobs and new cars are not going to be low, low wage jobs. So it means our employers or local companies will be in physical competition. Um, attainable and market rate housing. Right now, we are based on the projects we have under construction and about to be announced with the commission. We have over fifteen hundred units in the pipeline in the next five years. Uh, we can say today, that, that will probably be higher by, by the end of next year. That's, that's single family and multifamily. And when I say multifamily, it doesn't mean all apartments, uh, townhomes and uh, duplex. Uh, maybe, maybe, maybe look at and, and, and across the whole city. And of course, uh, in terms of helping with getting people ready for jobs, um, we're working with a a group called, with, uh, called Opportunity Hub, where you can have services, uh, jobs, social services in one location or uh, campus location in the city. So that's underway right now. Uh, we're, we, we work with a group to apply for funds from the Ready Two Point O. So keeping our fingers crossed and know how much money we can get to get that jump started here in the city. Uh, prison, uh, opportunities, what, what can happen there? Uh, we will know as we go along the next eighteen months. Uh, Nipco site, Market Mall, again, open for discussion, uh, the sky is the limit in terms of, you know, what, what can happen in those locations. Entrepreneurship, how do we, how do we foster that and make sure we are, we have some kind of location to foster um, training, um, A I lab, that kind of stuff for, for people who live here. And of course, vibrant business city, we think that we can do a lot with that for getting neighborhoods redeveloped and getting grants to our community. And last but not least, there's always challenges. So uh, you know, public safety is always going to be an issue for us. And so uh, you know, we've got our department fully staffed and uh, you know, getting people trained. So we hope that that'll be an issue at some point. Um, new industrial buildings. I think I totally, we don't have enough land to build them right now. So but um, we need to have some more specs building in Michigan City. Uh, the old um, 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 plant, um, what was the, the one on of two twelve, but that, that was bought last year and now being refurbished, still pedal mobile plant. And so it's now being leased out. So uh, but that's, that's a big deal for us. Uh, childcare solutions, we were able to get a grant for six companies here, almost a million dollars for childcare last year, um, from the state. An extension plan, how do we grow without to get land into the city? And so let's, how, how do we, how, how do we do that smartly that has water and sewer areas uh, outside the city? And of course, attracting talent. How do we keep our companies growing here? We're going to attract people here. We're going to get people uh, through our school system or A K Smiths or um, uh, community colleges. But also you can't keep up with the, the growth, the growth. So it means atta- attracting people. Uh, we got to adopt regulations for downtown. Uh, we, we had some, I studied down and some overlay districts done late last year. And so we're waiting for you guys to kind of get uh, traumatized to your seat, but we'll, we'll bring it to you at some point. But uh, downtown has to grow. We need to look at how to make it grow. Overlay districts, what we should put in our downtown, what we shouldn't put in downtown. All that type of stuff is what Blackman was made last year. So I get, there'll be meetings with the planning department with that soon. And then updating our comp plan with all the changes going on, you know, your comp plan, every five to ten years, you got to look at it. Does it do what you want to do? Can you do what you want to do at the location you said before? So something could have changed what you had thought about five, eight years ago. So we got to make sure that's updated and updating our zoning codes. Um, and then of course, the last but not least, oh, city service and the capacity, you know, how do we make sure the city can um, affect growth positively? Um, because you need more staff, you need to have technology in, in city hall. And so I know we were growing police, we're growing fire, but yeah, look at the whole city, you know, um, finance, um, planning, you know, water. Uh, so all the departments got to, got to grow, uh, because you know, we need new, new lift station, new pumps, new, and, and do a whole lot of stuff to, to grow. And so that means people to manage it. So we got to look, you know, holistically, how to grow the city, you know, in a positive way, but also find the finances to make, to make sure that happens. And of course, looking at infill, we do have a lot of infill lots in the city, um, west side, midtown. Um, how do we make sure, you know, we get places where people can live that's affordable in those areas? So that's in a nutshell, um, a lot going on. And as I said, I'm open to questions, whether it's here or somewhere else, but a few, a few of y'all have met um, uh, on this side and and there's a lot going on in the city and there's not enough time for me to tell you all that tonight. So.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hulse?
Councilman Beatrix.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. Um. One of the things I'm most happy, happy for in this community is that I've served in a lot of capacities and, and it's always al- almost always been for, to serve the community. And one of the ones that was most uh, rich and most rewarding was to serve as a, a member of the Board of Directors on E D C with Clarence and other board members who, some of them are in the audience, Don Babcock and Bill Hackney. Uh, you've always had a great Board of Directors and uh, the work that you've done and the work that they've helped you do has been vibrant and active and involved and obviously successful. Uh, so I guess keep up the good work. But the, the issue I have, and I brought this up, I think to you at a private meeting, and I I think I also talked to the, the mayor maybe. Uh, I, I keep hearing from people, prospective uh, owners of Sola, the condos at Sola, and maybe even Eleven Street, that there's people interested in turning these into V R B Os. And that's not what we want in either place. We want people who move into Michigan City and become permanent residents. So at some point, is there going to be some oversight to make sure that we don't have a lot of rich people who live somewhere else snapping these places up and turning them into V R B Os?
My understanding of the project is there'll be a portion of residents, it's a hundred fifty units. So there'll be a portion that's sold for residents and a portion that'll be managed to the hotel. So it's not going to be um, by owner rental. You have to be, have to call the hotel and rest, and you get a, get a hotel room. That makes sense. So it won't be individual owners renting by themselves. You can't do that. So you have to call the hotel and make a reservation. So.
Good.
Councilman Cora.
Mr. Hulse, thank you for a very nice presentation. And actually, it makes me optimistic about the future, uh, uh, with all the things that are going on. Um, and uh, look forward to seeing them uh, come to fruition. Uh, today, I, I saw something like another data center coming to La Porte, I think, a billion-dollar investment uh, that the governor announced. Uh, can you comment on what impact it'll have on our community? Because I'm sure it's with, it's close proximity.
Well, definitely jobs. I mean, those are high-paying jobs, two hundred jobs. So from that standpoint, yes. Um, from a tax standpoint, nothing there for us. They're doing a pilot, which means they get the money. So that's smart that way. But I mean, that's, I, I think for a large person, we should do that too. But I mean, yeah, for uh, from the, the job standpoint, yes. Now, we have been talking to two data centers. Um, can't comment right now, but um, that's kind of popular right now, uh, cloud service and web services like all across the whole country and somehow they're looking at the Midwest, Indiana specifically. So um, that's all I can say right now.
Now, in your plan, uh, the fact that you're having housing, new housing at different income levels, different price points to attract young uh, uh, individuals who are coming out of college. And I, I think it's great even that we could, we should attract them to stay here, even though they are working in all these different um, option, economic opportunities that are presenting themselves within close proximity to us. And so that's a great plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Clarence, I really want to thank you and your whole team. I think it's miraculous what you've done over this past year. So I really want to acknowledge that because I know a lot of hard work and coordination went into producing results like this. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you so very much. Because this is going to have an effect on absolutely every single person who resides here in Michigan City and for our whole community and the opportunities that are going to be coming here. Um, this is just a thought I've had recently, so I'm going to drop it because it's lingering in the back of my head. And if I can't silence something, then I'm going to speak it. So I'm going to do that. Um, our Uptown Arts District appears to have transitioned into a restaurant destination. When I look at what's down there that truly is dedicated to the arts, we have the super huge art space, Artist Lofts there. And I do want to acknowledge Tim and everybody that worked very hard on getting that here. And then we have our S F C um, frame and gallery space. And then a number of artists have taken up studio space in what used to be formerly um, the St. Mary's um, elementary school. But those are sort of like the three major things that I can pinpoint. So I don't want to get lost in this whole conversation that that has been branded as an Uptown Arts District. And if that can be taken into account, and if there's anything we can do to bring back the vibrancy that was there a few years ago, we had several galleries there, at least probably nearly a half a dozen. So that's input that I have. Okay.
All right. Any other comments? Councilwoman Lee?
Yeah, um, thank you for all the information and I appreciate you and your whole team. And one thing I appreciate the most about you all is that you have something for everyone in Michigan City. You're not just focusing on one certain demographic or two, but there's something for everyone in Michigan City. And I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. And I want to introduce my board. I want to make sure that, that all are here. Forgot the can my board please raise their hands so people know who you are? There you go. So, thank you. And thank you, Council, for your, your, your support and the community. We've worked with a lot of partners, so it's honorable teamwork. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hulse. Very good. Are there any other reports from boards or commissions this evening? Uh, let's see, moving down, reports, select committees, that's done, mayor. Reports from the mayor or other officers and departments?
Good evening, President and Council. I'm Marty Corley, Michigan City Police Department Chief of Police. Uh, I just wanted to, I gave each of everyone a handout, but I wanted to keep good on my word. I will be here at the first board meeting of every month to give department stats for the following month. So in May twenty twenty-four, Michigan City Police Department Statistics, um, total cost of service, three thousand five hundred seventy-three. Total reports taken, four hundred and fifteen. Total arrests, two hundred and four juveniles, twenty-two were juveniles and a hundred eighty-two were adults. Total shots fired, calls, forty-four. Um, total firearms seized, fifteen speeding tickets, a hundred forty-two, eight were citations, a hundred thirty-four were um, warnings. Which is uptick because we just had an operation pull over um, the last week or two. Um, warrants issued, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty were served. Um, and fifty-seven were recalled. Um, flock had twenty, generated twenty case reports. Ten of them were for death. Um, four were accidents, hit and runs, one was for a battery. One was for a stolen vehicle that was recovered. One was for driving offense, two were for warrant arrests and one for a missing person. Our social workers, uh, um, statistics, uh, for the month of May, thirty-three total referrals. She had thirty total contacts. Um, her referral sources were twenty-two came from Patrol Division, seven came from reports generated by officers. Um, one was for the, from the administration, three were self-referrals. And then referral types, three were for suicide ideation or attempts, fourteen for mental health. One for substance abuse overdose, um. Two were for juvenile issues or runaway, two were for abuse or neglect. Three for housing, four for, I mean, three for aging elderly. Three for protection orders and six were for victim of crimes. One was for financial issues, two were for legal issues. And resources provided. Uh, three were referred or resource provider were community mental health centers. Five was from the emergency department or hospital, two were from housing agencies. Uh, two were for shelters, um. Two were for employment services and two or other, which consisted of food service from Salvation Army or either uh, and um, transportation on the South Shore. And also I didn't have enough to hand out, but I will leave these here upfront. That's okay with you, President. Um, to an announced Michigan City Safe Citizens Series. This is a series that's in co- collaboration with um, Michigan City Police Department, um, our brother and sisters at the Fire Department, and then also at La Porte County EMS. It's a four-part series that, um, with classes happening every Thursday during the month of June. Um, the first, um, the, and every class will be at the police station and it'll start at four thirty. Um, the first class is gun safety. Um, that's June sixth, the, um, where we'll be basically handing out, um, tips on how to handle a gun properly, how to store a gun properly and safely. And then also we'll be handing out um, gun locks to participants. Um, next one is be June thirteenth, Stop the Bleed, where La Porte County EMS will be um, giving the participants uh, lifesaving techniques to help prep a, a person that might um, suffer from a gunshot wound. So that's some things can be done prior to EMS arriving to make sure that. So that's some things can be done prior to EMS arriving to make sure that everything goes well at the end. And fire safety will be June twentieth, where the fire department will be given tips on how to safely keep your house from, you know, fires and how to safely maneuver through fires. June twenty-seventh will be personal protection, where the police department will be giving, you know, just basic, we're not going to teach anybody how to fight, but we'll give you basically, basic tips on how to get out of bad situations so that you can get available help. So those are good things I wanted to give. Any questions?
Okay, yeah, chief, with those classes, how long are they going to last?
Probably about an hour, hour and a half, depending on, we'll have a probably each class has like some type of PowerPoint or handout. So say about an hour, forty-five minutes to hour of some type of PowerPoint instruction at the end. Depends on Q and A and whatever else.
Cause I'd like to come Thursday, but I know I got a meeting at six o'clock, so.
Yeah, I will imagine we'll, we'll be done by six o'clock. Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And could you tell us?
Councilwoman Tillman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could you tell us how, how can a person, do they need to register or can they just show up?
Yeah, sorry about that. I just skipped that part. Yeah, so on the flyer, there's a QR code that you can go to and basically QR code takes you to the sign up. And you can sign up for all four classes. You can sign up for one class, you can sign up for two. Just you, you get to pick and then that four is your information and you're all registered. We do ask that people do RSVP or register in advance so that we can kind of have a head kind of what to expect. When we get there, we'll be some swag given out from each department to kind of give to our participants too.
Any other questions? Councilman Nelson?
How you doing, Marty?
Good, sir.
Um, I think we spoke about this earlier in the year. Individualizing the shots called. So I can kind of see if this in the area, like in my ward.
Okay.
Keep an eye on that.
Yeah. Yep, I will work on that. Well, next time I get out, I was trying to divide by the area. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a one more comment. And these are a couple of things that I see in the neighborhoods that I think if we would get them under control, that it would make the neighborhoods look a lot nicer. Where I see a lot of cars and vehicles parked in yards for whatever reasons. And as far as I know, that falls under the jurisdiction of the police department. Yeah. And then the other thing, and I don't know how this got started, but it got started and it's just getting bigger and bigger and bigger, is where cars are parking in the opposite direction on the other side of the street. I was always taught you park in the direction of travel that you're going and you don't cross over lanes to park in the opposite direction. You know, on, on the side streets, okay, I, I, well, I don't get it, but I guess you got to accept it here and there. But right on Main Franklin Street, I see it time in and time again where people come all the way across the lanes and they park, you know, pointed north and the traffic is going south. Is there some way that the police department could maybe make a concerted effort in trying to get that?
So after your conversation a couple of months ago, I actually sent it out to our people to, when we see it, to address it. So if our officers see it at the time, we will address it. But I, I don't know, I don't know any other way. Like, I mean, if you see it at that time, you can call us, like a parking complaint will come out.
Okay.
Deal with it then also.
Okay.
Yeah, but we have, I have advised our shift to, if you see it, to address it. We're actually doing something where basically going to pick a, a, maybe a city ordinance violation to that type each month to maybe concentrate more when they're not taking calls for service or, you know what I'm saying, going on, you know, more priority calls.
Yeah. Councilman Nelson, how are we looking at the dumping site?
The dumping site on what side?
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, Council. So the dumping site, so right now, we have cameras at one location. We're in the midst of putting more cameras up at Hitchcock. We are actually assigning one of our interns to start reviewing all of those videos so that we can start citing and finding and maybe prosecuting some of the culprits of those, the illegal dumping that's happened across the city. So don't know what else. We're using solar powered lights, I mean, solar powered cameras to capture video. So what we're doing is now submitting those to the police department to act on them.
And what are we, what is the offense going to be?
I don't know. No, I'm just kidding. So, so it depends. There are, it, it is a criminal offense, as far as I know, for illegal dumping. So I, I don't know the code or anything like that, but the goal is to put out some type of press release, inform the public what's happening. I mean, we have people who are vandalizing our food boxes as well. And so I plan to put eyes on that as well. I know people talk about Big Brother, but I don't want them tearing up the stuff that we're doing to help the community as well. So there will be more cameras located at locations pointing towards those, those things. The illegal dumping site on Hitchcock, but the one over by Central Services, we already have a. I don't think people know that we have video of them, like dumping. So more to come on that. I think once people understand that it's happening and they start getting cited or start getting violations and, or receiving a summons from the court, they'll understand how, how this has become a priority. We're just trying to get there.
Any other questions of the council, of the police chief or the mayor?
Oh, I have some more stuff.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor. Sent you there. Go ahead. Thank you, Chief Corley. Yeah.
Good evening. So we are, summer's underway. We've had, we have twenty-one interns who have started with the city. Great projects. We have some engineering students who are working on ADA compliance. We have students in the planning department helping me with two grants. We have people in the mayor's office. We have people working on records retention. We actually had a field trip today to a storage that we found out that we have with records in them. Nine vaults and about ten pallets of records for the city. So we're going to be spending a lot of time really going through our records retention through the state policy. And the process for that is going to take us some time to get through those, but an important project. So we have not done any records retention, anything. These records go back to the seventies. So we're working through that, but we have interns at the airport, the park department, the zoo, the cemetery. All working on great projects. So I think one in the controller's office as well. So good opportunity to get some things done. I went into a brainstorming session that I didn't know I was going into on the first day. And they presented to me what they would like to do as an ambassador program for the city. And you'll see a young man sitting in City Hall now greeting people, directing them to where they need to go. He's working on some event stuff for Terry, greet them. But they're really like embracing changing the image of Michigan City. So I thought that was a, a great, a great thing that they came up with. And the other thing I would like to announce is that you'll see a press release next week. We are actually participating in the summer feeding program. So we got what we're calling Feed, Feed the Children in the Parks. And so we're using Joe Hawkins Park, Tall Timbers Park and Walker Park to host sites for the summer feeding program with the school system. So the summer feeding program is for the children under eighteen years of age who are at the park. And it's going to be Monday through Friday from June third through July twenty-sixth. So some additional food for children that are out of school. I don't know the times yet. We'll share the times. I know there's usually a breakfast and a lunch. So that will be available. Also, at the next council meeting, we did receive word that we did receive a grant. I can't share it yet. But we, we are award recipient of another grant. And I'll share that after they do their thing and press release and stuff, but I'll share that at the next meeting. And we're just, we're busy. We're working through quite a few things at the sanitary district. Again, I want to give a shout out to our controller's office. They have stepped in and done it just a phenomenal job in working with the sanitary district. And we continue to try to see improvements. It's an older, older plant, older system, and we know it needs some TLC. So we'll continue down that path. But other than that, any questions for me?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a question. This program, Feed the Children, how, how is that working?
It's every summer.
Well, I understand, but how is the city involved with that? Are we providing funds for the?
No, we are not. So the way.
What's the city doing?
Okay, so we're allowing them to use the parks for it, basically. It's a partnership. But there is something else to come here soon. On your agenda with the ARPA money, there's a food insecurity piece of that. And there will be some pop-up events that happen in the parks. So we're still working through that, those dates, but it's kind of in conjunction with that.
Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Yeah, Mary Angie, would you go through those sites again a little more slowly this time? That the food's going to be given out.
Tall Timbers.
Tall Timbers.
Walker Street.
Walker Street.
And Joe Hawkins.
Joe Hawkins. Thank you.
West Side, East Side and over by Tall Timbers. Any other questions?
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilwoman Tillman has a comment or a question.
Thank you. Will there be opportunities for volunteers if needed?
I got some things you can volunteer for. If you just, I do have some volunteer. Well, let me say this. Let me step back. So we did receive over probably twice as our grants were open for the mayor's charitable gala and we received double requests than what we raised. People ask for a lot. So we will be working through those grants. I've already notified all of them that I received their grant applications and that we'll, I'm trying to get them their money next week so that before the summer gets going. And I've asked them to supply us with volunteer opportunities for all of those programs so that we can share it with the employees and with the council for all of the programs that we're supporting. So that might be a good way for council members and, and employees to participate this summer. I think the more active that the council and employees are in the neighborhoods, the less crime and violence we'll see. So I'll make sure I send a list of all those volunteer opportunities.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And Fire Chief Zugnux?
Good evening, Council. Barrett Taylor, Fire Chief. I want to thank Chief Corley for bringing up the safety program we're going to be doing. We, he approached us about it and we were pretty excited about it. We thought it'd be a really good thing. So we definitely jumped on board with that. So looking forward to doing that. To touch on the Hitchcock Street dumping site, not only are they just dumping, they're actually breaking the locks on the chains to get in there to dump. I got a call on, I believe it was Friday, the twenty-fourth, from one of my assistant chiefs, battalion chief. I guess when the sanitation department had went to lunch, they usually lock the gate up because they've got people out there to just start dumping whatever they want. They busted the lock, so I had to send one of our guys to go buy new locks and then we get the sanitation department some keys. So we'll see how long this will last. I understand it had been, there had been a history of that before. It hasn't happened since I took over the chief spot at the beginning of the year. This is the first time I know that it's happened this year. So like I said, we'll see how long that lock lasts. So I'll give you the rundown of our calls for the month of, of May. We had a total of four hundred and fifteen. Twelve of those were fires, which aren't all structured fires. I know I, I say fires and that's pretty broad, but that would include like, let's say, grass fires, car fire, structure fires, you know, things of that nature. We had three hundred and twenty-nine rescue or emergency medical calls. We have fourteen of those calls, fourteen calls were for non-fire hazardous conditions, which would be like fuel spills, electrical wiring problems, things of that nature. Service calls, and I'm, I'm looking at this because this is how we got them broke down in the, the way our system sets them up, which would be the ten service calls would be, you know, smoke or odor problems, might smell smoke, we went and check it out, or unauthorized burning. And then we have forty-four good intent. Those were just people thought there was an emergency, we got dispatched, canceled en route. Got there, maybe somebody saw some steam, thought it was smoke. So basically just going to check out something that really turned out to be nothing, but as it implies, good intent. And then just false alarm, that's pretty self-explanatory now, when false alarm, false calls, just, you know, bad smoke detectors, whatever. So and then on six of those medical calls, we had used Narcan six times. But out of all the calls I just mentioned, that only comes out to four hundred and thirteen. We have two that are, haven't been reviewed yet. So they're in the system, they haven't been reviewed, so they didn't get onto my list at the time of this printing. So, which was yesterday. So on the calls, if anybody, any questions, feel free to ask. Anything?
Any questions or comments of the chief?
I have one other thing I'd like, if I could read this letter real quick.
Sure.
Got a letter from Beachwalk Property Owners Association, dated May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. And it's a thank you letter for the fire that was on a three oh five Beachwalk Lane on April the nineteenth. Says, Dear Michigan City Firefighters, on behalf of Beachwalk Property Owners Association and all the residents of the Beachwalk neighborhood, we want to express our extreme gratitude to the Michigan City Fire Department, Michigan City Firefighters B-Shift, Fire Chief Barrett Taylor, Battalion Chief Mike Orzak and Captain Jason Weiss for their swift response, bravery and outstanding firefighting skills that suppressed the fire at three oh five Beachwalk Lane in the early morning of April nineteenth. Without this extraordinary effort, we believe there would have been considerably more damage to homes in our neighborhood. Because of your heroic effort, the fire was contained quickly and damage resulted only to homes, only to two homes with no injuries or fatalities. We wish all the firefighters the best in the future and thank you for being there for us when we needed you and assign Beachwalk Property Owners Association Board of Directors. That's Adam Weirs, Cameron Goff, Julie Nias, Steve Johnson and Rich Murphy. I wanted to read that to let everybody know and really just to say for myself that I am proud of our firefighters. I'm proud of them every day. Not just those guys and the outcome that they have, but I'm proud of our firefighters every day. They do their job with pride and professionalism and that makes me proud to be able to work with them and stand by them when they do their jobs. So I just wanted to be able to do that and recognize them in public for that.
All right. Thank you, Chief Taylor.
Any other questions, any concerns?
Any other questions, concerns? No, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. And moving on, we are done with officers and departments. Ms. Nyelov, are there any petitions before us this evening?
There are no petitions.
Communications?
In accordance with ordinance number four, five, three, eight, the clerk's office received the following accident reports from the MCPD on May twenty-eighth regarding accidents that took place on the following dates, May second, May eighteenth and May twenty-fifth.
Okay. Thank you very much. And are there any questions about those accidents? Okay, all right. And there was a reason that, and I don't know if council members have, you know, a question of or wondering why, you know, we get a copy of these reports. But anything over fifteen hundred dollars in damage to any vehicle, whether it's street department, fire department, police department, vector control, the city council gets a report on that. So we're made aware of what's going on on the field. Other, other than that ordinance being put into place, I don't know, I think it was like four years ago, put that into place. You know, the council had no awareness whatsoever of what was going on with vehicles in the city. And I think it's brought down the damage to vehicles, made employees more accountable, taking care of the vehicles and department heads and possibly saving the city money. Moving on, Ms. Nyelov, our first resolution this evening by title only?
A resolution by title only, a resolution of the common council of the City of Michigan City, Indiana, granting DM in Michigan City LLC an assessed valuation deduction tax abatement for real property pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one, one dash twelve point one. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Mr. Coulter.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilman Dabney?
I may have more comment after Mr. Hulse comes up and talks about this abatement just a little bit. I may have more comment after Mr. Hulse comes up and, and talks about this abatement just a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
Plan and Salt, EDCMC Director, Tulokans Park Plaza. Um, just for the benefit of the council who are new, um, a tax abatement is a, an incentive given to a company, uh, whether they're new or moving into the city, um, is probably the most basic incentive every, every city or county in Indiana has to offer. Uh, typically, um, companies that are moving ask communities for support. And so, uh, a tax, uh, abatement is giving you a forgiveness over a time period. Um, standard is ten years. Uh, Big City, uh, with due to the council president years ago, we had a discussion about it five years ago, but how do we ensure, um, companies get the benefit but not keeping it for ten years on, on the books? And so Big City is probably one of the few communities that actually don't do ten years. We will do seven years for real property and five years for personal property, but we still give the company the same amount of dollars they need, because most companies want the money upfront anyway. That's when their first three years, when they need the money. Uh, and so, um, tax abatement is probably, probably the most popular incentive every city, county in Indiana gives. Uh, then there's, there's some other state incentives that they go after, like training grants and those kind of things. So tonight, we have a company that's been here in the eighties, uh, they had, they had a, uh, sales office, uh, in Chicago in the eighties, and then they had a production office here in the last ten years in Michigan City. Um, they have grown exponentially, uh, much from one product to twelve different products while they've been here. Uh, and so they want to stay here. And so they could have gone anywhere else in Indiana, you know, Fortage, La Porte, but they want to be here. And so um, what, what, what our office does is to work with the company to help them walk through the process, to look at what incentive they get. They have also what, um, they're going to give back to the community, i.e. jobs, investment. And for, again, for the benefit of those who are new, every year we come before this council, uh, we track all those past incentives. So when I came here ten years ago, there's probably fifteen companies that had tax breaks. And so every year we bring that list of the council to make sure that when they're provided the investment, they create the jobs, and then you guys say, okay, they get the, the abatement. So it's not a one-time thing. Every year I'll be coming back to you with the list, so for your, for your, for your benefit, to you, we are aware of that. So I'll become, we have, uh, about a dozen out right now, and so about a month or so, uh, when I get them all collected, because they're supposed to send to the clerk, they doubt they go to the county and everywhere else. And so we had to collect them from every different departments and then bring them back to the city council. And so that was, that's where, that's where we keep track of what was given out, and are they, are they, are they keeping their promises to us? We have actually terminated three in the past ten years that didn't keep up their promises. So that's, we take it very seriously. So this company is a local company, uh, DM, DMart Enterprises, uh, family-owned. And so they're looking to grow, I spent about twenty million dollars in our city, uh, to build a brand-new building over a hundred thousand square feet and hire over thirty new people. Uh, starting pay is, uh,
How much, how much, how many?
Thirty, thirty.
Okay, yeah, so.
Starting pay is twenty bucks an hour, which is great for, for Michigan City. Um, and they do a lot of metal fabrication, they support the steel industry, uh, in the region. And so, uh, they're growing very fast, and they want to stay in our beautiful community. So I'd like to request the council to look positive on this, uh, tax abatement. The VP of Operations is here, uh, Cassie Martin, you want to come and say a few words? It's up to you, sir. Uh, this is, uh, Ms. Cassie Martin-Grym, and she is the CVP of the company.
Wait on me. Thank you, Mr. President and council members, and thank you, Clarence. Um, a third generation, proud owner of a family business. Um, usually, third generation, we either crash and burn or we grow. So this is our growth. Um, we've been here for over, over thirty-five years. Like Clarence said, we started really small in production, um, making one product line for our partner. Um, we now do twelve. We're building this new building because collaboratively, we came up with a new process that will set us light years ahead of a lot of the competitors. Um, so thank you for being a great city to do business in. Um, and we like to hire locally, work with the schools, and, um, do mock interviews at AK Smith. We like it here, and we love to stay. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, uh, since you're here, you might as well stay here and see if there's any questions or comments from the council members. Councilman Nelson?
Out of those thirty employees, how many are Michigan City residents?
Oh, they're not hired yet.
They're not hired yet. They're gonna be five, they're gonna be, they're gonna hire thirty people. Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, real quick, I just want to say that I'm, I'm glad you want to stay here in Michigan City, do business with us. And, um, you know, Clarence did mention this when he was talking, but I just wanted to reiterate that when we give out these tax abatements, that we do review them on a yearly basis, uh, to make sure that the company is meeting their end um, of the agreement that we give the tax abatement. They do investment, they do hiring and things of that sort. So what we do is we actually review to make sure that they're keeping up their end of the bargain as we continue along with these tax abatements. So I just wanted to make sure that the public really heard that uh, as we go along. And once again, thank you for wanting to stay here in Michigan City.
Any other Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Yes, um, I really want to thank you and your family for being here for three generations. Um, when this, um, resolution came before me, I was really curious, so I did a lot of internet research. And it was interesting to see that your grandparents started it in the basement of their home. And it's grown exponentially, so, and to see that now two granddaughters, um, have taken over. So a big shout out for female business owners, um, diversity again in our community. And I actually drove out to, um, Millennium, um, Business Park today, and it's very impressive. Um, GAF has a very large, um, distribution, um, center there. And there's at least four other businesses that are located already, and two lots sold, and three for sale. And, um, it's, it's unbelievable. I had no idea this was there, and this is in my ward, Ward Six. And it sort of hit off, you know, it's across from Silver Birch, um, residential facility there for seniors. So, um, just really pleased, and thank you for choosing us.
Councilwoman, uh, Cora?
Yes, want to, uh, wish you good luck, uh, in your, uh, future, uh, expansions. And again, I just wanted to echo what Councilwoman Mullenhour said. It's, it's gratifying to see a third generation of business. And, Mr. President, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor for this.
Uh, please add Councilman Cora as a co-sponsor. Yes, Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Please add me as a co-sponsor also. I was so excited, I forgot that.
Please add Councilwoman Mullenhour as a, uh, co-sponsor. And I, I do, I have a question for, uh, Mr. Hulse. So over the seven years, what's gonna be the total amount of the, uh, abatement?
In your packet, there should be a spreadsheet.
Yeah, there is, there is.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It'd be, uh, it's over five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, no, behind, behind that. It'd be a spreadsheet behind that. No? Sort of. I'm not sure if it's in there. But just for the record, it's over, it's five hundred and five thousand dollars plus.
How much?
Five hundred, five hundred and five thousand dollars.
Five hundred?
Five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Half a million.
Half a million dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Over the seven years?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And just to warn the council, they'll be back, um, once they are three quarters of the way with the building, they gotta assess what equipment they need to, they'll be back to get a bid for a personal property for equipment, probably in about nine months, so.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Lee?
Uh, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
You have a comment, Mr.?
Uh, yes, um, the, these, uh, tax abatements are complicated issues. Uh, you can tell by all the papers that we've gotten, but uh, on the face of it, it's really pretty easy. Uh, you're gonna get a tax abatement, and the city's gonna get something for that. And for our purpose, that's gonna be new, new businesses in town and new people hired at a good competitive rate. Uh, I'm chairman of the Tax Abatement Committee, uh, along with, uh, Daisy and, and Joe. And when, one of the things we'll, we're gonna look at when, when Clarence gets us that list of everyone who's getting an abatement, is have you done what you said you were gonna do? Is the, was the investment made? And were the people hired? And are they getting good, good incomes? So, uh, for us, that's fairly simple. The only question I had for you, which wasn't simple for me on this, um, the nineteen million that you're spending, not all of that will be on the new building. Is some of that for capital goods too? Equipment?
Uh, no, Clarence was just saying, so that is the building. Cost of buildings went
Oh, okay.
High.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's a large steel structure, we have to have heavy cranes in there, so.
Okay, well, I thought I heard you say that you have this new thing you came up with that nobody else knows about. It's gonna make you more competitive than everyone else. I thought there must be some equipment being purchased here, too.
We'll come back.
There is. Uh, you'll see me again in a few months.
Okay, there, that was my question. I'm, I'm, I'm glad you're in town and we'll be happy to help you.
Yeah, just one more question from myself. So the construction, uh, do you plan on hiring union contractors to build this facility for you?
So our general contractor is out of El Perizo, um, and I believe our bids go out to everybody locally here, um, unfortunately. I, I don't have control over that, we have a budget to stay in. Um, I will say, I've been told that there's gonna be a shortage with the jail going up in Westville. Um, so we're gonna take whoever we can to build this building.
Is there any, thank you very much. No more questions or comments from the council? Okay. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Come to the microphone, sir, state your, uh, name and address.
Yes, my name is Wayne Reitzel. I live at forty-two ten East Michigan Boulevard. And as far as the resolution, she's coming in, it's a nice business. She's got a lot of options as far as employing the employees to hook up that steel building. She's just not aware of it at this point. Uh, cranes, equipment, and stuff like that as well can be brought in, and basically, a machine can build that whole building by itself with no actual physical people. Uh, wanted to address something else real quick. You asked why people park the other way?
Oh, sir, sir, we cannot, we gotta stay on track with the subject at hand. If you would like to comment on that, you, you, let me finish. You can comment under public comment. Not now.
Okay, as far as the tax abatement section of that, uh, if that building is movable after and no longer presents a financial income, it would no longer be a taxable unit.
Okay, thank you.
Anything movable?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Having none, public, uh, comment is closed. Is there any council comment? Councilman Dabney, motion to approve?
Support.
Has been a motion to approved and seconded by Councilman Cora. Ms. Nyelov on the vote?
Ms. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Prozabulinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatrice?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
And Ms. Lee?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyelov. And with our only ordinance before us this evening, uh, is our first and only ordinance on second reading, uh, by title only, and just want to say that this ordinance has been advertised in the Herald Dispatch on May twenty-second, and formal public hearing will be held this evening. Ms. Nyelov? Title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional preparation in the budget of the ARPA Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund for the tenth edition to the initial plan for the use of portions of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for various uses, including the city's website, marketing, farmer's market, cemetery maintenance, and ID upgrades, on-call engineering services, sidewalk repair replacement to purchase a bucket truck and chipper, replacements of the fuel distribution pedestal and key fob system, financial consulting, neighborhood safety, parking, parks and beautification projects, IT upgrades, and affordable housing initiatives. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Ms. Mullenhour, Ms. Lee, Mr. Prozabulinski, Dr. Cora, and Mr. Beatrice.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Having none, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Come to the microphone, sir, and state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Wayne Reitzel. My address, forty-two ten East Michigan Boulevard, Michigan City, Indiana. Uh, the purchase of the new bucket truck and the, uh, wood chipper, you might want to look on, uh, USgov dot com. Uh, used government equipment will save you guys hundreds of thousands of dollars. Because some of those are three hundred-hour units, and they just, the government, federal government just gets rid of them. Thank you.
That's a very good point. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, any council comment? Councilwoman Tracy Tillman?
Um, I'd like to make a motion, um, to have the reading on this, this evening.
Okay. There's been a motion for third reading. Is there a second?
Support.
Second by Councilman Dabney. Ms. Nyelov, if you would please, ordinance by title only?
Mr. Nelson?
Aye. Oh, that's fine.
I take a vote.
Yeah, we gotta vote on it.
Mr. Prozabulinski?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson? I mean, Ms. Tillman? Sorry.
Aye.
Okay, ready. Okay. Mr. Beatrice?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
And Ms. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Nine in favor. And no one opposed to have third reading.
Okay, Ms. Nyelov, by title only, third reading?
An ordinance on third reading by title only proving additional preparation in the budget of the ARPA Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund from the tenth edition to the initial plan for use of portions of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for the various uses, including the city's website, marketing, farmer's market, cemetery maintenance, and it up, IT upgrades, on-call engineering services, sidewalk repair replacement to purchase a bucket truck and chipper, replacement of fuel distribution pedestal and key fob system, financial consulting, neighborhood safety, parks and rec, uh, beautification projects, IT upgrades, and affordable housing initiatives. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Ms. Mullenhour, Ms. Lee, Mr. Prozabulinski, Dr. Cora, and Mr. Beatrice.
Is, uh, do the authors have anything they'd like to comment on? Authors, they have anything they want to comment on? Having none? And we will have the formal public hearing this evening. I didn't have it under a second reading, but I'm gonna have it under a third reading, so.
All right.
Do you have something, Mr. Nelson?
Okay.
Um, I'll address the, uh, the chipper. Um, so we did, um, get, initially get, um, a brand-new quote, but decided to go through the state and get the used, get some used, uh, bids. So what you have in your packet for the chipper is a used price. So we did do that, and we shared that in the workshop, um, that we did have a, um, uh, we switched to a used model. Um, also, um, this is sorely needed, um, for the website. And, uh, we know that we have some access issues with the public and, um, some different things we're doing with the planning department as far as permitting. We continue to get, um, complaints about not being able to find things on the website. Had someone call me the other day, I looked all over the website, website and couldn't find the information I needed. So, um, I appreciate all of the support for all the sponsors, um, for this. I think um, we have some things that we know we need to move forward. Um, I think this is a step in the right direction and, and providing some access to the public, getting our, um, protecting ourselves, um, security. Getting our protecting ourselves security wise with IT. I think there are a lot of different things that we know we've kind of been treading, you know, water for the last several years. But now we finally can get some of this done. So I appreciate all the support from all of you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone else from the public? Right now is, this is the formal public hearing portion of the ordinance. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Anyone from the public wish to speak? The formal public hearing is now closed. Are there any further council comments?
Motion to support?
Oh, okay. I haven't seen you. Yeah.
There's been a motion to support by Councilwoman Tillman and Councilman Dabney?
Second.
And second by Councilman Dabney. Ms. Nyelov on the vote?
Mr. Prozabulinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatri?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldenauer?
Aye.
And Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nyelov. Under new business? The council has nothing. Under unfinished business? The council has nothing. Comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
This is the open public's comment, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Wayne Riesel. I live at forty two ten East Michigan Boulevard, Michigan City. I'm here to address our constitution and things going on within the county. Okay, I have two US, one US
Sir, if I could, and you have three minutes under public comment.
Okay.
Great.
Blessing versus Freestone. Title forty two USC was never enacted in positive law in child support. There's there's no right to it for the parents or the children. So all arrests under that are violation of law. Eighteen USC nineteen ninety seven, failure to act, the felony. Okay, Holmberg versus Holmberg states specifically that Indiana and the other thirty nine states were all part of the separation of powers doctrine. Okay, so that means that the judge is a contractor and party to the child support division, which is ruling on a case in which they profit from. They have a woman sitting over in Port County Jail that said, oh, she didn't take care of her kids. We want some money. Well, there's no right for those kids to have any money, nor the parents. So if they don't have a right to contract or a constitutional right, then they don't have no right to arrest the woman. She got pictures of her with her kid and she's still locked up. Okay, those people are profiting illegally. They're committing a felony called kidnapping. The sheriff, oh, make an appointment. What the hell does he think he works for? He works for us. If he can't come down and talk to me, his ass is fired. Now, you guys got a certain amount of time to act specifically or you get indicted. That's all there is to it. I have the case laws for you guys right here. As far as anybody parking the other way with with their children, they let them out on pastor's side. They park with that to where they can get their children out of the car so the little kids don't run out in traffic. Streets are real narrow, pretty dangerous, pretty hard to carry a carrier groceries and handle a little child. Okay, that's why those people park like that. Sometimes you gotta handicap people out so they don't get run over. Okay? Your contractors like Nipco? I got a four foot hole in my garage where they set a bucket on top of my roof and crushed a hole in it. We ain't there yet to go to court because I'm in the middle of depositions for another federal hearing. Okay? And two forty two nineteen eighty three lawsuits? They can ask that all bonding blanket, all insurance be canceled from the city, eliminating the city completely. Period. They can do that in those. So if that woman gets out of jail, because she's a she's a spouse of a veteran, disabled veteran who passed away, she didn't get her dependent income compensation yet? That would have paid for that? You know, her child support, whatever they want to call it, extortion. And they took and took her trailer away. She had a home big for. They didn't comp, they took it for the lot rent, but they never compensated her for what was sold over? Plus you people, as far as your escrow accounts go?
Sir, if you could summarize.
Almost.
You got ten seconds.
Okay. Your escrow accounts for your houses, your mortgages, they better be paying you two percent or they owe you a bunch of money.
Hey, thank you, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Simmons. Mrs. Simmons?
Good evening. Good evening, Council, Council President. I am Linda Simmons, the Director of Marketing for our La Porte County CBB in Marquette Mall. I am here this evening to just leave packets of information for all of you. I believe our CEO, Jack Arnett, had emailed you all copies of our twenty twenty three community report, but I did want you to get hard copies. Also in here, you also know, this year is the fifteenth anniversary of our Great Lakes Grand Prix. Title sponsor is X Insurance again. The dates for this year start July thirtieth and end August fourth. A lot of you have been to our event and we all know what a great event it is for Michigan City, for our county, and the revenue that we get from people staying in our restaurants, our hotels and so on. So also in here, I've put, we have a golf outing July thirty first at the municipal golf course. So I have a flyer, so any of you who might be interested in golfing, it has the contact information. And also the block party that will be taking place on Saturday, August third downtown Michigan City. Just to give you more information, we've got a lot of great things coming, a lot of free things coming for family as well. And the big thing that we're calling this is it's a race week twenty twenty four because we do have a lot of great things coming on. So between the block party, the golf outing, I've also put a printed copy of our brochure with all the events going on each day for the event. Will be, but once again, Washington Park. The great part about this, too, is our VIP tent. We have extended it by sixty feet this year, so we have plenty of room. Also, Eventbrite, the website on our Great Lakes Grand Prix dot com website is where you're still able to purchase VIP tickets for your friends and so on, just to let them know. So I'm just gonna leave all this information right at the table and everything is in here. So I have one of these for each of you. I saw Dr. Cora earlier, so I was able to give him his. So any questions regarding the boat race or anything?
Uh-uh. Go ahead, Mr. Nelson. Councilman Nelson? Will you need any volunteers?
We do have a group. Why don't you send me an email or get with me after the meeting and I'll take your name down? If you're interested or you know someone interested that I can submit that to the appropriate person. You, thank you.
Any other questions, Mrs. Simmons? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Any other comments from the public?
This is Tommy Kalabich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. First, I want to straighten something out. All the students at the Michigan City area schools, they they receive free meals at school because we're in the CEP program. That's the Community Eligibility Provisions. So that's why we get the free food and they're giving away at the parks. That's where that's coming from. We've been having that for about fourteen years now. I believe that got started when Dr. Vidya Cora was the president of the school board. On Sunday was graduation day at Michigan City High School. So I want to congratulate all of our graduates. And when school starts up back in August, there's going to be a lot of changes. We're going to have a new superintendent. We're going to have a new boys and girls basketball coaches. I think we all know these are very high profile and prominent positions with our community. And there's been a lot of great men and women that have held these positions. So I want to wish them well in the search for the for the new superintendent, girls, boys, basketball coach. I want to congratulate one of our members of the boys' golf team, Elijah Green. He qualified for the regional. If he places at least third in the regional, he qualifies for state. I always see more of that. I never get tired of seeing that. I would say, everybody go out and enjoy the singing sans festival. I got three, three extra wristbands and passes for Saturday and Sunday if anybody wants them. I won them last October at the mayor's ball. So just want to say thank you and a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Sir, sir, if you would? Yeah, could you remove your articles from the from the desk and and step back and have a seat, please? Thank you. Are there any more comments from the public? Any more comments from the public?
Just quickly, is the, oh, I'm sorry, Brian Gross, eight thirty West Sixth Street. Isn't the Washington Park sand sculpture going on this weekend?
Yes.
Okay, just want to mention that.
Okay, thank you. Any more public comment? Any more public comment? Public comment is now closed. Any council comments? Councilman Beatri?
I just wanted to do a favor to Amanda and Gail. On our agendas, at all of our meetings, we have resolutions and we have ordinances. And resolutions are voted on at that meeting. So I know it's common for people to jump on as co-sponsors to resolutions. Since they're going to be voted on at that meeting, that means one or two of them has to leave the meeting during the meeting to go back upstairs and add those co-sponsors to that and bring it back down so we can we can all sign it afterwards. And I've never jumped on as a co-sponsor for resolutions because of that because I don't really want them to have to run up there and make another copy and run back down again. So a yes vote on a resolution is the same as I support that. I wish we kind of get into a habit of on resolutions, not jumping on as a co-sponsor. Ordinances are fine because that's going to go to our next meeting anyway. One other thing, real quick. I want to thank you to the Board of Works, especially because Gene Simmons is here as as a member of the Board of Works. We finally resolved that major traffic congestion issue at Cleveland Avenue, Cool Spring, and revised the stop signs from Tilden and Cool Spring and moving the four way to Cleveland and Cool Spring. And Gene's the guy that made that motion to do that. So thank you to Gene, thanks to the Board of Works and thanks to the mayor. I saw that she put, got a flyer out to kind of remind Michigan City that it's June thirtieth. We're going to make that switch, so prepare for it now. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Tracy Tillman?
Thank you. I just wanted to give a sincere thank you for all of the condolences, the love and support, whether it was a telephone call, a text message, words of encouragement in regards to the passing of my mother on May tenth and those moments, the support, the cemetery board, the city administration, EDMC, council. I thank you all for your support and guidance through this process with me and those in other departments. It was greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Cora?
Mr. President, I want to thank Councilman Beatri for clarifying that. So I did not realize that there was a procedure to follow after that. So I appreciate you doing that.
Councilwoman Lee?
I have two events that I would like to announce on Saturday, June fifteenth at the Guy Foreman Amphitheater. There's Michigan City Pride Fest from one to eight P M. If anyone is interested in volunteering, you can find the event on Facebook and there is a link to a sign-up genius to volunteer at any point during the day. We have over eighty vendors this year, which is thirty more than we had last year. So every year we keep growing. And then the very next day, on Sunday, June sixteenth, at Guy Foreman Amphitheater, there's the Juneteenth event and that starts eight AM to eleven thirty AM, which is a grill off. Then ten thirty AM to twelve thirty P M is a church service. At one P M, there's African American garden dedication at Friendship Botanical Gardens. And then four P M to nine P M is concert jazz, R and B, comedy and spoken word. And then on Wednesday, June nineteenth, is Juneteenth. And that's at its actual day of Juneteenth. And there's another celebration at Charles Westcott Park from two to four P M. That's ages seventeen and under. And so that'll they'll have some games and some competitions and prizes then. And then from eleven AM to six P M, they have a whole list of various events. So check that out. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Yeah, thank you. I realize this is a little distant into the future. It's actually happening from August tenth to the eighteenth, and I may forget by then. But I attended a house concert on Sunday, which raised funds for this free event that happens every year, every summer in Michigan City. It's put on by the Michigan City Chamber of Music Festival. And it's a series of classical, jazz, spiritual. And all of these concerts are free to the public. So I really want people to know about these. And it's a combination of the of the festival committee, the New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, the Illinois Electric Strings Ensemble. I'll be putting these flyers up at the information desk upstairs. So anybody that's interested, please pick these up, spread the word. This is world, this is world-class musicians that actually come into Michigan City to perform. So I want everybody to know about this. I was a great classical music lover as a child and it's because my parents had lots of albums at home. And I listened to those and that instilled in me a really great love for music. So let's get our children there. Let's get our young families there so we can be exposed to this wonderful resource we have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other council comments? I have one comment. I just want to thank the cemetery workers and the cemetery director, Mr. Jeff Leneski, for making both Swan Lake and Greenwood Cemetery the best it has ever looked. And I know that he takes great pride in what he does and I think he is doing an outstanding job. And he is the best man or the best pick for that position. And very, very proud of what they did there. I I attended the ceremony at the cemetery and I know the mayor was there with her mother. And I just want to give a shout out to all the military clubs, like the American Legions, VFW, DAV, and the Michigan City Municipal Band was there and did a fantastic job. And just to the public, I think the crowd was a little bit bigger than it has been in the past. So I just want to thank everybody that came out to both the parade and to the ceremony to give honor to the fallen soldiers and even to the soldiers that are alive now for what they've done for our country to give us the freedom, both the right to have an assembly like this and to express your opinion, whether you agree or not, and to give you the right to vote, which a lot of nations in this world do not have that right. And yeah, it just hits close to home on Memorial Day. And then, you know, I would, I mean, I mean, I know it's my own personal opinion, but you know, flying a flag on Memorial Day and every other flag flying holiday, I just wish a lot of people in Michigan City would get behind that and fly the old red, white and blue for honor of Michigan City and all the people and what that flag represents around the world. So with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? The meeting is now over. Thank you.